All right, I show six o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. I'm going to ask you to stand and recite the pledge with me. And after we complete the pledge, I'm going to ask you just to pause for just a couple of moments in honor of Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day and those citizens and veterans who lost their lives and have survived that attack. So the pledge of allegiance, please. So it was 79 years ago today, the attack on Pearl Harbor. We must never, ever forget the price that those men and women paid. Thank you for that. All right, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Davidson?
Present.
Alderman Dickerson? Alderman Dorhoff?
Present.
Alderman Miller?
Present.
Alderman Miller?
Present.
Alderman Milner?
Present.
Alderman Reese?
Present.
Alderman Turner?
Present.
Alderman Zaring?
Present.
Mayor Bowman?
Present, thank you. We do have a quorum. I am delighted that we have a ceremonial manner tonight. Is Officer Kincaid on the phone? Chief Hofer?
Sorry, Sergeant Kincaid didn't make it today. He had planned on it, but had a death in the family and was unable to attend tonight.
Okay. Please extend our condolences to him, and we'll recognize him at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Ratliff, did we receive any agenda request forms from the public for public participation?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on then to our approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, November 16th, 2020, I would entertain a motion.
Please to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Dorhoff?
I was.
Thank you, ma'am. So I have a motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Turner to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, November 16th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes are approved. Moving on to the minutes of the work session, November 16th, I'd be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Zaring to approve the minutes of the work session for November 16th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes are approved. And now the minutes from the work session, November 30th, 2020. A motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as well. Moving on to the agenda items, and before we begin the agenda, I wanted to point out a couple of changes. You received an email from Daniel earlier today that on item E, which is the write-offs for EMS, that the corrected amount is $40,413.43. So when we get to that item, if you would please make that note. And then the other change is item F, which is the Council Bill 87 pertaining to personnel rules. We're going to hold that over until the next meeting to allow further time for the members of the board to study the changes. So moving on then with those two changes noted, we'll move on to Council Bill 82. Mr. Mauer?
Sorry, I had to unmute. My apologies. Council Bill 82 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the appointment of April McGoughlin to the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Thank you. Most all of you on the board are familiar with April, and she is on the call this evening. April, would you unmute yourself and show us or turn your camera on?
I hope you can hear me. It says that I cannot start the video because the host has stopped my video.
Okay.
So I am not able to turn my video on.
Okay. We'll see if the host can allow you to do that. Maybe. There you go. So April is well-known to us. She's an attorney in town. She serves already on some boards, and she's just a great addition to the BZA. She will be serving as an alternate to that board, filling in when there's someone who is absent. So I bring her appointment to the board for consideration, and I would certainly be happy to have a motion.
Make a motion, wait. Accept her to the board.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman. Was it Zaring?
Sure.
Okay. To accept the appointment of April McGoughlin to the Board of Zoning Adjustments. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. April, welcome to the Board of Zoning Adjustments, and thank you so much for your commitment to our city and for your service to the to the board.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely. All right, moving on then to Council Bill 83.
Council Bill 83 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to approve the special event request for the annual 2020 youth goose hunt.
Chief Hofer?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Before we begin tonight is what's turned into an annual event. It's a request from Phil Needham, Missouri Conservation Agent, to host a youth hunt. He does it on the Cass County Justice Center back lot where they have a nice pond with geese, which have turned into a problem. So I think it's a twofold thing, but he takes out the kids that are the young adults that he has in the youth safety class the day before the hunter safety class. So he's just requested to do that again this year. No problems with years past. This is probably five or six years that he's done this. So staff is recommending approval and entertain any questions.
Does the board have any questions for Chief Hofer?
And John, you said that they do this every year?
It's not technically on every year. Actually, they did it in January, so this is actually the second time this year. But he does hold the youth hunter safety course in the fall of each year or early winter.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Reese. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson is absent.
Aye.
Oh, hey, Dave, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
And Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Council Bill 83 is approved and becomes Resolution 047. And for the record, Mr. Barnett, the previous Council Bill 82, the appointment of April McGoughlin, is Resolution 046. I apologize for not mentioning that.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Council Bill 84?
Council Bill 84 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen authorizing the city administrative grant agreement with Dana F. Cole and Company for annual audit services for a period of three years, beginning with the fiscal year 2020, for the amount included in the proposal and establish an effective date.
Mr. Ratliff?
Okay, okay. You hear me? So we did send out an RFP for auditing services for 2020. In that review, we had myself and Ben Hart, Ms. Guthro, and Kim Hubbard that reviewed those. From those reviews, we are recommending that Dana F. Cole and Company to be awarded the contract for audit services beginning for fiscal year 2020, which would be the end of this fiscal year. That'll be completed for next year. They submitted the lowest bid and included a separate cost for a single audit that we required. Attached was the, in the packet, you'll see the bid tabulation sheet, which included the cost for the annual audit for each of the three years of service of the proposal from the Dana F. Cole Company. So if you have any questions further than that, let staff recommend approval.
There was quite a difference in those bids. Questions of Mr. Ratliff?
Have we used Dana Cole before, their firm? It seems like that name is very familiar.
Yes, this is Kim.
Oh, hey, Kim.
And we have. They were our auditors for many years prior to the Cochran Head and Vic.
Okay.
That received the bid and for beginning in 2017.
Okay, thank you, Kim. I thought that sounded familiar.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? And before we move forward, could I please ask those of you, when you're not speaking, please mute your microphone. We're getting some feedback, and that would be really helpful if, when you're not speaking, if you would mute your microphone. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for Council Bill 84.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Miller. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
And Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 84 becomes Resolution 048. Council Bill 85?
Council Bill 85 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville authorizing the mayor to execute certain documents for the transfer of title for the Walmart Distribution Center.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, this is a good thing. This is started back 20 years ago, and we're thankful for the leadership of those in that 20 years ago. And I have asked Jim Clark to get some data numbers together to you of what this has been for us the past 20 years. We also, I seen him earlier, Rob Lee, who's the general manager of the distribution center, and would like to allow, if I could, Mayor, for him to make some comments about the Walmart Distribution Center. And so I'll start with Jim Clark, and then Jim, you can kick it over to Rob.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Board. As Brad mentioned, 20 years ago, the elected leadership chose to partner with the Walmart Corporation, and they created or developed a brand-new distribution center. And I'll let Mr. Lee go into the scope of that particular operation that currently exists. And I was charged with collecting some of the tax revenue information to present to the board this evening, in case the board's not aware, what kind of tax revenue the project has generated. And I am not forecasting or estimating future taxes because I don't have the authority to do that based on any future appraised values. But I've been working with the county, and they're currently working closely with Walmart to assess the property. They're going out to re-measure it. I think they did it last Friday, actually, and to come up to a number probably in the spring of 2021. So let me share a document, if I will, please. Bear with me as Jeremy helps me share this. Okay, can you folks see the document? Excellent. What I did was went back through the Walmart Chapter 100 bond files in City Hall, and the first item is they had expressed that the school district property tax prior to the Walmart Distribution Center was $2,500 per year on 125 acres. So that gives you some sense of what they were starting with as far as revenue being generated off that property. So then, on the real property tax, they estimated that the property tax liability per year in 2000 was $571,265. So the city and Walmart agreed to a number, payment in lieu of tax number, $456,000. That particular number is 80% of the estimated tax liability on the property tax. So in essence, the tax incentive was agreed upon at 20% for 20 years through the Chapter 100 bonds. And I put the numbers there for you, so you can see how the calculations ran. So the 20% incentive was approximately $115,265 a year. So there is a chart that gives you the breakdown of the $456,000 of payment in lieu of taxes, and it shows the individual taxing jurisdictions and what each one was receiving as far as payments in lieu of tax based off of that agreed-upon figure. So as you can see, the school district was going to receive or did receive over the last 20 years $325,250 on that particular figure. You go to the next page, it doesn't express in that chart, but Walmart is actually paying additionally on personal property tax. And I went back and checked the county records from 2016 through 2020, and I put the figures up above, and the figures from 2016 through 2019 are paid, and the 2020 was due as of November 30th. That was the date I checked it, so they could have paid it since then. But this gives you some sense of the personal property tax, and it's broken out into two categories, the vehicles and the business equipment. Likely those might be depreciated at different terms, so they probably separate those for that purpose. So what I did was I ran down and I tried to reflect the total personal property tax revenue generated, but then also the school district's portion of that, and then also the school district total with the pilots of the 325, 250, and then the personal property tax combined. So you can kind of see the number. There are over $400,000 just to the school district each year. So that gives you some sense of what kind of payments they're making in taxes. Then I took the total personal property tax and the total pilots and combined those, and even with the 20% tax incentive, the number is around half a million dollars, $645,000 in 2020. So it gives you some sense of the contribution, financial contribution they're making, even with the parties agreeing to a 20% tax incentive at that point in time. So as of December 31st, 2020, the Chapter 100 bonds mature, and lease agreement will be terminated, and the property title, which is currently in city's ownership, will be transferred back to Walmart. And these are the documents that the mayor's being requested to be authorized to execute for this transition in this process. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Lee, are you on? Would you like to speak to the board?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you all tonight. It's been a very good partnership between Walmart and the city, and we do appreciate the support and the corporate partnership we have with you. Just a couple of numbers I'll share with you. At our distribution center, we employ over 750 associates, 86 of which live in the Harrisonville City District. It's about a 900,000-square-foot building. If you've never had the chance to come out there before, temperatures range in there from negative 20 to ambient. We service 138 Walmart stores and 31 sand clubs in six neighboring states. And on top of that, we try to be a good corporate citizen from a charity standpoint. This year alone, we've given out $25,000 in community grants, and we've raised over $18,000 for CMN. So again, good corporate partnership, and we appreciate all the support over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I have a statement that I've prepared that I want to share with the board. It was nearly 20 years ago to the day that Mayor Chuck Jones led the Board of Aldermen to make the right decision for the right reason. They unanimously passed an ordinance to issue industrial development revenue bonds to finance the costs for purchasing, constructing, and installing the 880,000-square-foot distribution center facility that would become to know, that would come to be known as Walmart Distribution Center 6065. Ordinance 2681 says in part that the Board of Aldermen finds and determines it's desirable for the improvement of the economic welfare and development of the city and its citizens to issue those bonds. While an unpopular decision for some at the time, our community is now reaping the rewards of that December 18, 2000 decision. The Walmart Distribution Center is a great community partner, not only providing employment opportunities and attracting new residents to Harrisonville, but also by being invested with us through associate volunteerism and donations. Rob, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen and the citizens of Harrisonville, I want to personally say thank you for coming to Harrisonville. I wish Mayor Jones could be with us today. Sadly, we lost him in January of this year. I'm pleased that we have Alderman Mike Zaring, serving in Ward 1, on our board at the present time. Thank you for bringing the type of leadership that your father-in-law, Mayor Jones, brought to our city. It was Theodore Roosevelt who said, "In any moment of the decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The worst thing you can do is nothing." Tonight, as we release these bonds, we can celebrate that Mayor Jones and his board did the right thing 20 years ago. So thank you again, Rob. We appreciate you. So glad you came to Harrisonville.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman.
And now we'll move on to Council Bill, let's see, Council Bill 85. So we need to have permission from the board to execute the documents that is releasing the ownership of the distribution center back to Walmart. So I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Reese? Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 85 is approved and becomes Resolution 049. Council Bill 86?
Council Bill 86 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to authorize the Harrisonville Emergency Services to write off a series of designated uncollectible debts.
Chief Myler?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Board of Aldermen. This is a annual write-off of bad debts incurred from patients that have either, are either deceased, filed for bankruptcy, or basically uncollectible debts. It pretty much states in the resolution about the process, what we normally go through, try to collect our debts. And I noticed this year that it's a little higher than, it's a little higher than what it was the previous year, but I think that was because it was a condemnation of several years past that was approved last year. I apologize for the mathematical error. For some reason, the program wouldn't calculate right, and so it only told one page. And I entertain any questions if, if you have any.
Does the board have any questions for Chief Myler?
I did, if I could. Eric, how much of that do you think is, and just out of curiosity, how much of that do you think is COVID-related to the number of runs that you all made?
I don't think there's any on this that are COVID-related.
I was just curious when I saw them.
A lot of these debts are incurred from probably the previous year, and these people, over time, either deceased or filed bankruptcy during that time period, first of the year or partial through the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Zaring. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner? Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Council Bill 86 becomes Resolution 050. And I really want to thank you for muting yourself when you're not talking. It makes a huge difference. Council Bill 88?
Council Bill 88 is an ordinance approving the sale of property by the Highway 71-291 Partners in Progress Transportation Development District, First reading Council Bill 88.
I believe Megan Miller, there you are, Megan. Good evening. Would you speak this ordinance, please?
Of course. Hi, everyone. I'm Megan Miller. I am the counsel to the 71-291 Partners in Progress Transportation Development District. I want to thank you all for letting me speak tonight, and I want to apologize for our lack of explanation for the last time we were in front of you. So my sincerest apologies about that, but I'm excited to be in front of you tonight. So the ordinance that you have in front of you is essentially doing the same thing. Pursuant to the Transportation Development District Act, before a TDD can dispose of property, they have to come to their local transportation authority, which in this case is the City of Harrisonville, and ask for permission. The last, I believe, November 2nd, we had an ordinance in front of you that was approving the sale of a 0.2377 acre property. The TDD has a buyer that's interested, and they are interested in a bigger parcel. So it's the same parcel, it's just tacking on the rest of the property that's included in that parcel. And so it's going to be, and I want to get the number correct for you, my apologies, I had it pulled up. The total acreage is going to be about 0.481 acres. And so we're just extending to that entire parcel. That's the only thing. This ordinance is the exact same as the last time. This just allows the TDD to sell the entire parcel rather than just a portion of it. And I will gladly take questions if you have any.
Questions for Ms. Miller?
Megan, one of the questions that the board had the last time is wanting to clearly identify exactly where that property is. Can you give them a little more discretion in where that's at?
So it is right south. Let me pull it up. That board packet letter that I provided had attachments to where the property was. And if I'm correct, it's just right on Royal Street, right? And if it helps, I can email out exactly where it's at. I'm not sure, but it's a tiny, tiny little triangle right to the north and south of Royal Street. right to the north and south of Royal Street. I'm not sure if that helps any, but that's, that's the information that I have about it.
So Royal Street is right there by the Butler Music Store, right there on 291. It's actually the road that goes nowhere.
I believe this property was originally, the reason why it was obtained was it was originally going to be part of an expansion, and it was going to be used and vacated for right-of-way, but that expansion didn't happen. And so this property has just been owned by the TDD. And so now I believe they have a buyer, actually, I know they have a buyer that's interested that is a business owner right within that area that wants to be able to take care of it and mow it and keep it looking nice. Yeah, so this was, okay, I'm sorry, this was the original property that you approved. If you go, if you scroll down to page three. Yes, so now this includes that tiny little rectangle piece of property south of Royal Street. So you had originally approved just that triangle piece, but they want the entire parcel. So that's why we're coming back to the board tonight.
Does the board have any questions?
Mayor Bowman.
Yes, Chief Hofer.
Just for clarification, Royal Street runs between Community Bank and that new strip center. And this looks like this property would be between that new strip center and the gun barn back there.
Okay. Thank you for that. We're hearing no questions for Ms. Miller. This is an ordinance.
Then we'll move it to the second reading, please.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Miller to suspend the rule and advance Council Bill 88 to its second reading. I have a second from Alderman Miller, I'm sorry, Milner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reese. Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring. Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
That's an aye for Zerring. I'm sorry, my computer was not unmuting.
It's all good. I caught it.
That's okay. We saw your thumbs up. A second reading, please.
Council Bill 088 is an ordinance approving the sale of property by the Highway 71291 Partners in Progress Transportation Development District, second reading Council Bill 088.
And roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Thank you. Council Bill 88 becomes ordinance 3522. Council Bill 89.
Council Bill 89 is an ordinance to approve the final plat of Zorro addition being a replat of lots 66, 67, and 68 in the block 24, original town of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, First Reading Council 089.
Mr. Ratliff?
It's Mr.
Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, I was planning on taking this one. You may recall that we approved a purchase agreement for the sale of two lots on both sides of the Rita Zorro family home at 302 West McCannick Street. To put that into, to make that effective, one of the things that we had to do was plat that entire block. The plat, you may want to look in your packet on page 149 is the area, and the plat is on 153. You'll see that what the plat does is it saves the portions of the two lots that we're not selling, but that we're keeping for right-of-way. It keeps them in city ownership. And then the balances of the tracks that are on both sides of the Zorro house are combined with her original lot for a bigger lot. If you approve this, the last step that needs to be done, that will need to be done is the closing of the property. I anticipate that that'll be occurring sometime in the next 30 days when COFELT title can get in schedule.
Does the board have questions for Mr. Crowe? All right, seeing no questions, this is an ordinance. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to suspend the rule and move to a second reading.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Turner to suspend the rule on Council Bill 89 and move it to a second reading. May I have a roll call, please?
Sorry about that. Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese. Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller, or Miller, pardon me.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading, sorry about that.
Council Bill 089 is an ordinance to approve the final plat of Zorro addition being a replat of lots 66, 67, and 68 in block 24, original town of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, Second Reading Council Bill 089.
And roll call, please.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Not sure what's going on with Alderman Reese. It looks like maybe she has an emergency phone call or something. So Council Bill 89 becomes ordinance 3523. And next on the agenda is a public hearing. Mr. Crowe, is that you again?
Yes, and I understand I sounded like Darth Vader in the last item. Am I sounding any better now?
Much better, thank you.
Oh, good, good. Well, with a little help from Jeremy. Well, that always helps. Anyway, this application comes to the board with unanimous recommendation of approval from Planning and Zoning Commission. It's to rezone little less than nine acres at the northwest corner of Timber and, Timber and Jefferson Parkway from R1 to R3 for garden density, neighborhood residential. The applicant is Housing Plus, and they're represented by Patrick Joyce with Anderson Engineering. They are asking to rezone this property to do Phase 2 of the Harrison Villa Senior Project. It will be 48 units in a little different street configuration, but 48 units of this, similar to what was constructed in Phase 1. They also plan, if, well, let me say that this is a housing, a Missouri Housing Development Affordable Tax Credit supported project, which is competitive process. If they are selected this round, they intend to construct the project in 2021 and complete Timber Drive to their furthermost property line as a part of that project. If they are not selected this round, as you remember, you have a development agreement backed by a letter of credit from them to complete Timber Drive by August 22 of 2022. The one item that came up at the Planning Commission meeting was there was a concern that one of the members had heard from some of the residents in Phase 1 that when they're trying to pull out onto Jefferson Parkway, they have, seems like a limited site distance of traffic coming from the north. We said that if this moves on to the next phase, we will have the applicant have their traffic engineer take a look at that site distance issue. We recommend approval for all the reasons that are outlined in the staff report. And I see that we have Deborah Hart with Housing Plus, the applicant, and her representative, Patrick Joyce, on Zoom with us. I'd be happy to answer any questions. But probably, Patrick, you might want to say a few words.
Yeah, Roger, thank you. Madam Mayor, Board of Aldermen, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Joyce.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we got you.
Great. So yeah, so thanks for having me tonight. I think Roger covered everything pretty well. This is just an application for rezoning. It is just under nine acres. We are looking at putting in 48 new units. That's going to be done through 12 new buildings, four plexes each one of them. And we are looking at accessing this site all from that same Timber Drive. And as Roger alluded, he discussed the part about extending that as part of this project, or even if we don't get selected, extending that at that date that he mentioned. With that, I'm available to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Questions for Mr. Joyce or Ms. Hart, who I believe is also on the call? I'm going to open a public hearing if there's anyone on the call who would like to speak about the rezoning request. Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to Council Bill 90.
Council Bill 90 is an ordinance of the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, approving an application to rezone 8.97 acres from the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to the R3 Cluster or Garden Type Residential Zoning District for the Harrisville Villas Phase 2 Senior Housing at the northwest corner of Jefferson Parkway and Timber Drive, and establishing an effective date thereof, First Reading Council Bill 090.
Mr. Crowe, do you have any additional comments?
I do not.
Mr. Ratliff, do you have any additional comments?
No, ma'am, other than we pointed out in the staff report, we know the history, and we've discussed that history with the petitioner through this next round. We also have Chris Arthur that'll be involved at the very beginning of construction, which we have great confidence that he'll make it a good project, working with him.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Crowe, or Mr. Ratliff, or Mr. Joyce, or Ms. Hart?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Davidson?
For any of those four, it's for the chief, excuse me, Chief Hofer, in regards to the traffic study that Roger had mentioned. Is, does he recall any, I mean, he doesn't have to have the answer tonight, but does he recall any accidents that they've had at that location entering or exiting that facility? Alderman Davidson, I do not recall any. And I have heard this in the past, and I knew that the next time coming up this was going to be a traffic study, I had gone out and looked at it. There is a little bit of an incline, but I thought it was sufficient distance, sight distance, to be making turns out of there. But a lot of that's going to depend on speed. We may be able to control it with speed as well. So something we just need to look at, and I think the study will be beneficial. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, everyone. If there are no further questions, this is an ordinance. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we should suspend the rules, move Council Bill 90 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Miller to suspend the rule on Council Bill 90, advance it to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading, please.
Council Bill 90 is an ordinance of the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, approving an application to rezone 8.97 acres from the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to the R3 Cluster or Garden Type Residential Zoning District for Harrisville Villas Phase 2 Senior Housing at the northwest corner of Jefferson Parkway and Timber Drive, and establishing an effective date thereof, Second Reading Council Bill 090.
Thank you. Roll call.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Milner. And Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 90 becomes ordinance 3524. Council Bill 80.
Council Bill 80 is an ordinance of the Harrisville Board of Aldermen adopting an operating budget for the City of Harrisville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, First Reading Council 080.
Mr. Mayor, this is actually the second reading of this council bill.
My apologies, Second Reading Council 080.
No worries, no worries. All right, so the board met for several hours in a work session to review the budget. And you see in your packet the changes that you all agreed to that were important to you going forward. So at that point, I would entertain a motion. I'm sorry. Actually, you're saying a roll call.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
The only thing I didn't see in here was we, did we not decide that we were going to do quarterly budget meetings?
Yes, we did decide that.
I just didn't see that in there, and I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss that.
We did. We, you agreed to that, and that's what we wanted. Wouldn't be a part of the budget document. But we did make sure all of the changes within the budget document are there. If you, the elimination of the purchasing of the additional coach truck, the postponing, the hiring of the second facility's position until the third quarter. The electric department will wait until the second fiscal year on the mapping and pole inventory project. Electric department will wait until the third fiscal quarter to begin the overhead lines and conversion to the underground project. And then at the end of the meeting, if you recall, Kim had said that the loggers' information had come in. We had plugged that number in, and it's an impact of 50,782. But with the changes that we did above, it did not impact the bottom line. You'll also see that it is a balanced budget in your numbers of expenditures and revenue. And what we did for your second reading, when you do your motion, you can add Section 3 to your motion on your second reading. That is outlining in Section 3 of the ordinance all of the changes. That is outlining in section three of the ordinance, all of the changes that you made on November the thirtieth in the budget workshop.
Any questions, Board? So your motion is going to be to adopt the operating budget as amended with those items that are pointed out in packet, Mr. Ratliff. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill eighty becomes ordinance three five two five. All right, the investigative committee report to the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Zerring, I believe that's you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the board. You appointed Alderman Alderman's Milner, Dorhoff, and myself to investigate the conduct of Alderman Dickerson. I'll tell you, it's something that we didn't take lightly. We took it very seriously with discretion, as much discretion as we possibly could, and also doing our due diligence while investigating the allegations. Our very detailed effort and findings have been provided to each of you. And based on the information we receive, that's been supplied to each of you, the committee recommends that charges be brought. Therefore, I move that Alderman Dickerson be charged with violation of city code as detailed in our report for the three charges.
Thank you. I have a motion.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. Roll call, please.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Abstain, please.
All right, thank you. You have approved the investigative committee's recommendation to charge Alderman Dickerson. And I have established a hearing for Monday, December fourteenth at six P M. Mr. Mauer.
Madam Mayor, there's two issues to be decided by the committee or by the board, excuse me, and perhaps just at the decision of Alderman Dickerson. The first would be, is the meeting going to be open to the public or not? Under our code, you are entitled to close the meeting. Since it does involve conduct of Alderman Dickerson, perhaps he may choose to have the meeting closed. But I don't know that it's a issue for the board as much as it is for him. So in planning this meeting for next Monday, I would ask if Alderman Dickerson wants the meeting to be closed or open to the public.
Alderman Dickerson.
Closed. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we got, Mr. Mauer, Alderman Dickerson requests a closed meeting.
Okay, the second question would then be if the meeting is going to be potentially live versus via Zoom. I recognize that we're not having live meetings now in Harrisville. But this is a rather unique situation. And I recognize the certain challenges that some of us have for technology more than others. And so I didn't know if the board wanted to have this meeting to be live versus not. If it's going to be live, I would think it would be limited to the Aldermen. And then when if witnesses are called, they would be brought into the meeting and then abruptly leave, including that we would observe social distancing and masks where appropriate. So I need to know if it if the board wants it to be live or if they want it to be via Zoom.
Mayor.
Alderman Turner.
We met the thirtieth for the budget meeting and had that with department heads, and we were okay. But I think something like this needs to be in person. And it's just us, it'd be a lot fewer people. And it's just to be brought in one at a time. So I mean, social distance, I don't think would be a problem.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Reese, did you have a comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I get my mute and unmute mixed up. I agree. I agree with Alderman Turner. I'd like to see this be an open meeting. I think that it's much easier. I just think that we can read each other much better in person than we can online.
Alderman Dickerson, this is Mr. Mauer. Do you have any objection to it being live in person?
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we got you. Did you hear Mr. Mauer's question?
No, what was it?
Alderman Dickerson, just the the second question is if the meeting should be live or if it's going to be via Zoom. And question if you have a preference, live or via Zoom.
Is it closed session?
Yes, it'll be closed session, but do you want it in person or via Zoom?
Oh, I guess in person, I suppose.
Okay. Madam Mayor, unless there's anything else, I'll take that direction and we'll make arrangements for the meeting to be at six o'clock next Monday in person, but limited to the members of the Board of Aldermen and any interested witnesses individually, one one after the other.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Moving on then to Alderman and committee reports. Alderman Turner.
I have a report right now. I did have a question that was brought to me a couple days ago. Some people were inquiring about Shady Lane, where we were at with it with the one-way direction. You know, from Lushton over to Lake Street, we did a traffic study, I know. And we were talking about making the one lane. We just wasn't sure which way there should go east or west. And we haven't heard any more since we've done the study. And I wasn't able to give them an answer, but I told them I would bring it up to see where we are.
Okay. Chief Hofer, can you speak to that?
I believe Mr. Brooks is the one that did.
Sorry, could you repeat, please?
I'm sorry, I I wasn't involved in the study. I believe Mr. Brooks is the one that performed that study.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Brooks.
Madam Mayor, if you could repeat the name of the street, I would appreciate it.
Shady Lane.
Shady Lane. We did do a traffic study, if you will, a traffic count. And based on the number of vehicles, we decided that would be no changes. Leave it as it is.
Okay, thank you. So Alderman Turner, there you go. Okay, anything else for you?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Dorhoff. I'm sorry, Alderman Davidson.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Miller.
I have nothing other than I just want to say to the board, thank you for allowing this meeting to be in person next Monday night. I I think that is best. Thank you.
Alderman Dickerson.
Nothing.
Alderman Reese.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I I appreciate the fact that you chose to put the Personnel Rulebook, probably a better name than that, but off until next meeting. I would encourage my fellow Aldermen to read through that document. Y'all have put a lot of work into that, and that represents a lot of the life of our employees. And I really think in order to make a true approval or disapproval, however you feel about it, you need to read that page by page. I realize it's eighty-seven pages, but every single page needs to be read. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Reese. And that was the main reason why we post want to postpone this until another meeting is to give the entire board the opportunity to make their way through those pages. Mr. Ratliff is going to provide a red line version for you, so you'll be able to see what was taken out from the last from the last version. Alderman Milner, what about you?
I was just gonna piggyback onto what Judy just was talking about. Brad and I have had a chain of emails today going back and forth just to just to for my own curiosity. And I agree with Judy, it's something we have to look very carefully at. And I I appreciate so much that Brad is going to take the time to give us that document so that we can see what our past policy was and what the current policy is going to be, as well as the new additions that are going to be on it. I had requested maybe that we get to have a work session so that we can ask those questions. And I didn't know if we'd had that set yet. I just want to make sure we don't cut ourselves short on time. I know you all want to get that done before the first of January, but considering our first meeting is the fourth of January, I don't know that that would really delay things if we had to hold off. So soon as we can get the details of that, that'd be great.
So Mr. Ratliff and I were talking about that prior to the meeting, and I think what we're going to do is flip our meetings. We'll have a work session on the twenty-first first at five thirty and then have our Board of Aldermen meeting at six thirty. That will give you a time to review that document. And then we can still approve it that night at the board meeting and still get it done in in time for January first. That was kind of the thought that we had.
And we'll get those documents probably the end of this week, hopefully.
Yeah.
Good.
You'll have plenty of time.
Yes.
Alderman Dorhoff.
I do not have anything.
Okay, Alderman Zerring.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to thank you for your kind words on the former Mayor Jones. You know, if he was here, he'd tell you there were a whole lot of people that were involved in that and responsible for that, making that happen. So appreciate that. Thanks.
Mr. Ratliff, report from the City Administrator.
Yes, ma'am. And to let Alderman Milner know, we will send out that red line. It'll be probably before the end of the week. We'll get that out to you pretty quick. We just wanted to make sure it didn't overload everything with all the red. And because most of the stuff, especially in the F M L A and other that that all came down from the feds. And so they love writing a lot of stuff. The city staff is continuing a chlorine burn of annual prevention maintenance during the month of November. So there may be a slight taste of odor to water, but it is safe to drink. But it's just part of our ongoing maintenance. The Street Department, underfloor plumbing and concrete floor was planned for the washout bay. They swept leaves from the street on King Arthur and Thunderbird area and vacuuming leaves from the ditches in the southwest area of town. K and J Remodeling Contractor has been working on the curb and sidewalk replacement on Ann Street or Ann Avenue, excuse me. And then just want to tell everybody again that through the Mid-American Region Council, that the city received nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars in federal funds for a grant to do the Muddy Creek Tributary, which is over for the South Street Culvert. This is a continuation to show people in our community of the advancement and continuing to deal with any of our stormwater concerns, but at the same time for our traffic in that area. That's a one point, one million dollar construction project that now we have nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars to go toward that project. This is a first time in almost ten years that Harrisonville has received Henry Federal Funds from Mid-American Regional Council. Still want to thank Carl and Cassidy and Ted. As Carl would say, they wrote the music and I sang the song. And it was a worthy project and we're we're excited about that coming in. That'll be two thousand and twenty-three is when that is planned for on the funds. And so you'll be seeing more things on that along the way. I can tell you when I told Ted about it, he was ecstatic because he said it's been something for ten years that he's been trying to get done. And so he's really excited about it. The the Police Department, some of you that went through the Police Department before the last meeting to see the new shower and changing room project. If you all recall, that was used with care funds from COVID. That was passed down from Cass County through the federal government. And it's a very nice for our police officers to be able to deal with any type of concerns that come with the COVID or as well as any other contributors to that. I know that Alderman Milner and the mayor have been long wanting to see that project completed. And so we're thankful to get that project completed. Then we are still, we had the retirement for John Codey. I had approximately about a hundred people that was able to come for that. And so we wish him well into retirement. And also, he is fighting cancer. And we wish him the strongest prayers to fight cancer and for his family as well. We're still having some vacancy issues with with the EMT department as well as in the Police Department. And nine one one, we're trying to get creative as we can to try to attract as well as to retain. And through all of this that we have going on, does Jeremy look in greater to you guys? We in code is now going to in code ten. So all of the staff are going through in code training because all of the software for the entire city is updating at this time as well. So they are trying to get trained up and ready for the upgrade to our system. And but I did get out of Jeremy. He was kind of excited about it because he really thinks in code ten is really going to do a lot of great things for the city, especially in the reporting side of it. Demo of the four oh one East Washington property is complete. Demo of the project, three oh one West Washington has started. We then received from a permit application from Walmart Distribution Center. They've added six hundred thousand dollars to the original part of the project. So now it's a three point eight million dollar remodel project that's happening out there at the Walmart Distribution Center, as well as a two million dollar store remodel project that is starting this month at the retail store. And so the codes department is going to be very busy with both of those large projects, as well as the other projects that we have coming up as well. With that, we have four additional homes under construction at the ranch. We have projects of Lexington at Hundred North Independence that are reconsidering that are reconsidering retail or business, but business occupancy for the second floor as an interest of our respective tenants. So the Love the Square is is very excited to see that progressing as well. And then for the meeting that we had on the C O Ps to give an update on the C O Ps. At the October nineteenth meeting, the Board of Aldermen passed the parameters resolution allowing staff to move forward with the sale of those C O Ps to fund the sewer and stormwater projects. And at that meeting, it was discussed about the collateral that would be required for the C O Ps. And and it was estimated that we would use the U V disinfection system and the South Sewer Lift Station in the we would use the UV disinfection system and the south sewer lift station. In the process of that, with the transfer of property that's going on with the Walmart Distribution Center, the underwriters has asked us to switch the collateral to City Lake and Lake Luna so that we don't slow down the marketing of those COPs. And so we wanted as staff to bring that to, to your attention as a informal approval of the pricing on those certificates. It doesn't really do anything other than it's in the legal part of that document to make sure that we can continue to move forward with that. And so if any of the, the aldermen have any concerns about that, please let me know. But we want to keep you guys updated all along the way as we go through that COP process and bring you back good news. With that, Madam Mayor, if there's no questions, that's all I have.
You have the October 2020 Municipal Court Report in your packet. And I would share with you, I received a call from Judge LaGrasso this week. He wanted to just say how, how happy he is to be the municipal judge here in Harrisonville, and how appreciative he is of staff. Staff is willing to work with them, and it's just been a really good transition, and he wanted me to know that. I want to acknowledge a couple of staff people that I see on here. I want to thank Andy Pollard and the Electric Department. I want to thank Grant Perkey and the Parks Department. And I saw earlier that Mr. Jacobs was on here. I hope he's still here. I wanted to thank the Street Department as well for a great job that you did for Saturday night for the mayor's tree lighting. You know, it, it looked quite a bit different. There were a lot of things that have been a part of it in the past that had to be put on hold because of the COVID issue, but at least we were able to carry on the tradition for our people of lighting the mayor's Christmas tree. There were some people who attended live. There were a lot of people who attended on Facebook lives. So I want to thank the Love the Square, Amanda Stites and Scott Beck for partnering with the city and for making that event possible for our folks. It was truly a very, very nice evening. The weather was just delightful. And I talked to a lot of people. Actually, I had a conversation with a couple who said he and his family had just moved here, that they moved here from Jackson County, and they loved living in Harrisonville. So there was also a little bit of activity at Love the Square and Christmas on the Square. I was able to celebrate with Maddie Moore, I'm sorry, Maddie Mitchell, her 13th birthday that night at Christmas on the Square. And then I received a text message later that Mr. Ratliff's oldest daughter received her engagement ring on the square after the ceremony Saturday night. So there's a picture of her fiance on his knee, asking for her hand in marriage, and then a lovely picture of her ring on her hand. So it was indeed an exciting Christmas on the Square. So I just wanted to thank staff for making it, making it be what it was. All right, questions from the media. I'm sorry, Alderman Davidson?
I'm sorry, forgot. Two things I wanted to mention. One is, did we ever get any information regarding the leaves, the leaves question from the, um, the Stamoso Company? Are they, were they going to do anything? Or did we get any result, resolution on that?
Yes, we did. You know, we extended our agreement with them. And as part of that new agreement, which will be effective January 1st, they will be providing yard waste pickup year round. But for now, since we're at the end of this year, there is no yard pickup for the month of December. So folks are just going to need to keep those and store them somewhere until January. But then come January 1, they will do, they'll provide yard waste pickup year round.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
And we posted that on, that was posted on the city's social page today. So hopefully that word gets out to folks.
And I'm sorry I didn't see that, but I'll make sure I get that to other people. And the second thing was, Chief Hofer, I think if he's still on the line, I want him to maybe announce what's going to be happening the next two Saturdays. I think it's something that's very important. And I, instead of me saying it, I would rather hear it coming from Chief Hofer, please.
Yes. Chief Hofer, tell us about Shop with a Cop.
Well, as everything else, Shop with a Cop's going to be a little bit different this year. We're going to scale it back quite a bit, but we are in line to help 200 kids with Shop with a Cop this year. We're going to do 100 kids on December 12th and return and do another kid, 100 kids on December 19th. There'll be temperature screened, everybody will wear masks. But the important part is bringing kids a Christmas, and we're able to do that, those two Saturdays. There's a lot to it. A lot of volunteers, a lot of officers from other agencies, as well as our agency and our VIPS, that basically put a lot of time into this year round. So we're super excited to have that, that coming this way.
I want to thank you, Chief Hofer, for your heart for the Shop with a Cop. You brought it to Harrisonville, and I've been involved with you each and every year. And it is indeed a delightful time. You really experience the spirit of Christmas when you see those children shopping in Walmart with a police officer. It has been scaled back, but this is a year of such need that we felt that we need to do something for these youngsters and their families. So Chief Hofer, thank you again very much for your leadership, and we look forward to two really successful Saturdays.
My pleasure, Mayor.
All right, questions from the media. Dennis, are you on here? Unmute yourself. You're still muted.
Can you unmute?
You're still unmuted. We're going to try to unmute you here. There we go.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, we got you.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I really have an issue with your decision for the meeting next week to be closed. You're not dealing with an employee personnel matter here. You're dealing with an elected official. And I believe it's fair for the public that they should know what the allegations are, what the defense is, and what the decisions are that are made. And I don't think you're getting, you're really representing the public if you hold a hearing against an elected official behind closed doors. And I would really like you all to reconsider this and, and open it, at the very least, zoom it for the public. But I don't think that this is a decision that should be made behind closed doors.
I'll let Mr. Maurer address that, please.
Sure. Had to make sure I was unmuted. The, the code allows for the meeting to be conducted as discreetly as possible. In the past, I believe that these meetings have been conducted in closed session. In this instance, Alderman Dickerson asked for it to be conducted in closed session. So given that the impacted alderman is requesting that it be done in closed session, I think it is within the discretion of the board to grant that request and do it in closed session. As for the charges, the vote would be in closed session anyway, and obviously announced publicly. I'm not aware of one where that's ever been done in open session without the consent and request of the alderman at issue. So to my knowledge, it's always been done in closed session if the impacted alderman so requests.
I just, I don't understand with an elected official, how the people that voted for him, or frankly, the people who voted against him, don't have the right to understand why any action is being taken.
I don't know that that's, the, the issue of the closed meeting is not necessarily that. There has been a very detailed report that has been provided. The charges have been so stated. So I'm not, I'm not thinking that there's anything here that has been kept from the public and the.
To clarify, has the report been made public?
To my knowledge, it has been circulated, and I'm not aware of anything that's been made, that it hasn't been made public.
But we will have no way to hear what, basically prosecution or, or defense of the allegations.
The, that if, I guess if, if I were you, I would take that up with Alderman Dickerson.
Well, I will just state for the record that I strongly object to this decision. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Mr. Maurer, can the document that Mr. Minnick is speaking of be sent to him?
I'm not aware of any reason why we would need to keep it confidential. Again, if Alderman Dickerson has any objection to making it public, I guess we could address it if he wants to lodge that objection, and I can review it. But I've not heard anything that would suggest that anybody's requested that if you remain confidential.
Okay.
I'd like to have it kept confidential until after the hearing is over.
All right, I will take.
Well, I'm, I'm going to step back in and say that this is a work product by an Alderman Committee. And if it was circulated among you all, then that pretty much makes it a public document.
Well, not necessarily, but I tell you what, I will review it. And I will, Madam Mayor, I'll let you know what we come up with tomorrow on whether or not it can be kept confidential with the request of Alderman Dickerson.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Maurer. Thank you, Dennis. Any other questions, Dennis?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Uh-huh, you're welcome. Alderman Milner? Alderman Milner, we have executive session.
She's muted.
Alderman Milner, you're muted.
I'm unmuted.
Thank you. Item number nine on the agenda.
Adjourn to executive session pursuant RSM 610-021 litigation.
So I have a motion to adjourn to executive session. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
I sure think I should, am entitled to it.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Davis, Davidson to adjourn to executive session. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
And Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned to executive session. We'll let staff drop off.